The August 1st, 2019 meeting of the Parker Planning Commission to order at 7:00 PM. Please stand and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance. John?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call absent is Eric, absent is Tracy, and absent is Kim. While we're doing the roll, I was not here last time, but I'd like to welcome John back to the dais. Glad to have you back.
Thank you. Glad to be back.
Always consider John my wingman over here.[97.22][97.22](laughing) So, at any rate, are there any additions to or deletions from the agenda?
No, sir, there are not.
The minutes of July 11th, 2019, are there any additions or corrections to the minutes?
No, sir.
Do we have a motion?
I move to approve the July 15th minutes.
A second.
It's been moved by John, seconded by Eliana that we approve the minutes of the July 11th, 2019 meeting. Please record your vote when it comes up on the screen.
Is that the rain finally came?
Sounds like it.
If you checked into the meeting, you'd check up there.
Mm-hmm. There it is.
There it is.
Save. Yeah, it's a pretty good rain.
Next. Next, we have a public hearing on the unplatted Hess Ranch rezoning. It's track it numbers Z-18 to 027. And we will open the public hearing at 7:02. Paul?
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of Planning Commission. As was just alluded to, there are essentially two separate applications. The first is a rezoning request, project number Z-18-027, and then additionally, sketch and preliminary plan request. Those project numbers are SUB-18-049 and SUB-18-051. Again, this is related to a PD guide rezoning for Hess Ranch and what has been referred to as the spine infrastructure sketch and preliminary plan for the Hess Ranch development. Please note that the applicant has provided the necessary notification affidavits stating that the hearing this evening has been legally noticed. So, the subject property is located at the southwest corner of Crowfoot Valley Road and Stroh Road. To the north is undeveloped property generally referred to as the Anthology North Development. To the west and to the south are properties located in unincorporated Douglas County. And to the east is Crowfoot Valley Road and then a combination of residential development within the county and within the town of Parker boundaries. The east half of the subject property was annexed by the town in 1984, and the west half of the property, oops, excuse me, was annexed by the town in 2003. Both halves of the property have been zoned for a mix of residential and commercial uses since their annexation. In total, the Hess Ranch development is roughly 1,136 acres. As background for Planning Commission, earlier this year in May, Town Council approved what was called a partial waiver resolution. This partial waiver resolution essentially allowed the applicant to develop the subject property in two segments. Segment one, which is a portion of the request this evening, is essentially the eastern one-third of the subject property, and segment two is generally the remaining two-thirds of the subject property. Essentially, what this partial waiver resolution did was defer detailed submittal information for segment two until such time as that area is developed. So, think of things like detailed drainage reports, traffic studies, topography analysis, things of that nature. As further background, again, the subject property is at the southwest corner of Stroh and Crowfoot Valley. The applicant has submitted a rezoning application for what is known as their segment one development, which is generally everything that's located east or right of the green lines there, save for one planning area south of Future Chambers Road. Within this rezoning, the applicant is proposing to amend Planning Area Boundaries Six, which is generally located at the northern border of the property; Seven, adjacent to Six at the northern border of the property; Planning Area Eight, which is just south of Planning Area Six; Planning Area Nine Boundaries, which is at the northeast corner of the property; Planning Area Twenty-One, which is adjacent to Chambers Road; and then Planning Area Boundary Twenty-Five, which is the southernmost planning area in this segment. Additionally, the applicant is requesting to revise certain lot standards for single-family A-attached type products. They are requesting to rezone Planning Area Nine, again, that's in the northeast corner of the subject property, from a mixed-use designation to a designation that would allow for single-family residential development. And then additionally, they are requesting a zoning amendment for Planning Areas Three, which is at the northwest corner of Future Chambers and Stroh; Planning Area Four, at the northeast corner of that intersection; Planning Areas Twelve and Fourteen, which is on the south side of Stroh. All four of those planning areas are in segment two, so not a part of the segment one development. But as part of the partial waiver resolution, the applicant developer was obligated to submit this zoning request to ensure that one-third of those planning areas, or roughly 22 acres, is reserved specifically for commercial development with no residential development. The sketch and preliminary plans that have been submitted are primarily to create right-of-way for extensions of Stroh Road to the west, Chambers Road to the northwest, and then a collector to connect those two roadways called Spirit Trail Boulevard. Additionally, the sketch and preliminary would create drainage tracks to accommodate those future right-of-ways, as well as some unbuiltable tracks that would eventually become developable lots through future sketch and preliminary plans, as individual lots, open space, landscape, that sort of stuff. Moving on, the town's master plan calls the subject property out generally for a mix of low-density and medium-density residential, with some neighborhood centers as well mixed in. Part of the obligation for the one-third development in those Planning Areas Three, Four, Twelve, and Fourteen is to accommodate the neighborhood center that's on the town's master plan. Additionally, the rezoning request this evening does not change any of the total allowable units that would be allowed in these planning areas. So, what is entitled for the total number of units today will not change with this zoning amendment. And then, just to further dive into the nature of the request this evening, again, the rezoning application is to amend certain planning area boundaries, certain lot standards, rezone that Planning Area Nine, and comply with the obligations of the partial waiver resolution. Again, there is no proposed increase in the overall density or number of units allowed per the PD. However, there is an increase in the amount of open space that would be dedicated to the tune of roughly 10 acres. Staff's recommendation, Planning Commission's recommendation this evening, and ultimately Town Council's determination are based on nine specific criteria found in the town's land development ordinance. Those will be discussed here in a little bit in this presentation. Again, the sketch and preliminary, these are the first two steps in plating residential lots for development. These applications do not specifically create the right-of-way and tracks, but instead it allows the applicant to move forward with the execution of a final plat that would create those tracks and right-of-way for dedication. And again, the recommendation this evening from staff, your recommendation as Planning Commission and ultimately Town Council's determination is based on approval criteria that are discussed later in the presentation. So, there are three requests that specifically relate to the zoning, the PD document for segment one. Again, that is to revise those planning area boundaries that were previously mentioned. The purpose of this is to accommodate what's called a dendritic design. A dendritic design pays special attention to the existing landforms and vegetation and attempts to respond to the natural environment. Think of a traditional development where there's one big retention pond that is very obvious as you drive by. The dendritic design is intended to work more with the natural environment to sort of spread out those ponds and work more with the natural environment for stormwater and those sorts of things. This generally leads to a naturally-integrated subdivision design and the preservation of natural features. The benefit to the town of this request is that a subdivision is a subdivision design that would respond to the natural environment and minimize the physical impacts to the site. The lot standards, again, this would create certain minimum lot sizes and frontages for single-family A-attached home products. The specifics are on the screen in front of you. The benefit to the town is that this request would define a minimum lot size that would accommodate a different type of single-family home product that future residents of Parker would be able to obtain. And then, the third item is that rezoning of Planning Area Nine. This is essentially to respond to some existing site constraints, specifically the topography of that site. If you're familiar with it or been by there, the Planning Area Nine sits significantly higher than the intersection of Stroh and Crowfoot. Were the applicant to develop this in a commercial manner, it would require some significant site grading, which is not necessarily consistent with the dendritic design approach, and additionally may lead to issues with the long-term viability of commercial at that corner. So, they propose to rezone that to a single-family residential zoning designation. The benefit is that the town can work with the applicant to implement the dendritic design throughout the entirety of the site, and the planning area would be developed in a meaningful way. Again, the fourth component is to comply with one of the obligations of the partial waiver agreement. Town Council approved that agreement back in May of this year. Again, it was essentially to allow the applicant to develop the subject property in two segments. And again, this partial waiver resolution deferred a lot of the detailed submittal requirements for segment two until such time as segment two is ready for development. One of those obligations was the submittal of this zoning request, which the applicant has complied with. The real benefit to this is that the town gets an assurance that one-third of that corner in total would be developed for commercial purposes, which has long-term benefits in terms of services to current and future town residents, as well as the town's budget So, as was alluded to earlier, there are nine specific criteria for a rezoning. Those nine criteria were outlined in detail in the staff report. Staff won't go through each of these individually, however, there are a couple worth highlighting. The first one would be that a need exists in order to accommodate the dendritic design, establish a realistic lot standard for single-family A-attached home products, and comply with the approved partial waiver resolution. Without proposing this zoning amendment, the applicant would be required to develop those planning areas as they currently are, which is not as responsive to the natural environment as is being proposed today. And the seventh one, piggybacks on that, there are minimal environmental impacts associated with this development, and that is ensured through the dendritic design, which is fundamentally intended to be sensitive to the natural environment. So, the sketch and preliminary plan, again, the sketch and preliminary plan is limited to segment one. It's primarily intended to allow for the creation of right-of-way for extensions to Stroh Road and Chambers Road, while also creating the new connection known as Spirit Trail Boulevard. The sketch and preliminary plan would also allow for the creation of drainage tracks associated with the right-of-way, as well as other unbuiltable tracks that will eventually become buildable tracks through the plating process, through Planning Commission, through future sketch and preliminary plans for the residential development. The applicant has submitted this information ahead of the sketch and preliminary plans for those residential lots in order to begin construction of what we've referred to as the spine infrastructure, ahead of that construction of the individual residential lots. And again, there are specific criteria for the approval of a sketch and preliminary plan. Staff won't go through each of those, but staff has reviewed the application along with our referral partners and determined that those five criteria have been met. In terms of referral agency response, up until yesterday, staff had received responses with either advisory comments or no comments related to this request. On your dais this evening, you will see a letter dated July 31, yesterday, from Anadarko Corporation. Staff received that yesterday, and after review of that information with the town attorney's office, it's been determined that the applicant has satisfied the notification requirements established by the town's land development ordinance and the Colorado revised statutes, and no further action is required by the town. So, with that, staff is recommending that Planning Commission recommend that Town Council approve the requested rezoning for the Hess Ranch plan development. And additionally, staff recommends that Planning Commission recommend that Town Council approve, subject to the one condition in your staff report, the requested sketch and preliminary plans for what's known as the spine infrastructure of the Hess Ranch development. Staff is available for any questions you all may have. The applicant also has a short presentation and will be available for questions as well.
Questions for Paul?
Paul, I have a couple of brief ones. Is this, once it's zoned and the applicant starts to build, is it going to be just a cash contribution, or is there going to be ground provided for Douglas County schools to put in some educational facilities?
So, as part of the original zoning and entitlement process for Hess Ranch, the school district was coordinated with, and the land dedication for school sites has been satisfied by the development.
And the other one is, is the applicant going to provide funds in cooperation with Douglas County to expand Crowfoot Valley?
No, the applicant does not have a formal obligation to contribute or widen Crowfoot Valley Road, other than the turn lanes and auxiliary lanes needed to support the traffic from this development.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions for staff?
I have a question. Overall, what wasn't clear is how long is this going to take from the point where it actually begins to it ends?
For the development itself?
Mm-hmm, for the timeline.
The applicant's communicated to us they intend segment one to be anywhere in the neighborhood of three to five years, depending on market conditions. And that includes the infrastructure information that's before you this evening, as well as the residential lotting, sketch and preliminary that will come before you later this year.
Thank you.
Paul? There we go.
I can hear you.
Thank you. I didn't see where, is there anything that's in any of the current planning areas where we're actually going to be using the THD zoning in the PD?
Confirm.
I'm looking at the map, and I'm not seeing any THD stuff.
That's correct. There are no planning areas in segment one that have the THD designation.
Did the planning committee, did the planning department consider whether or not it would be important to have independent living and assisted living facilities available in this first iteration?
Sure, those are always important conversations to have. The focus or the intent of this segment one is more for a single-family neighborhood community, whereas segment two has other areas that have been master-planned for a number of years now, specifically with the mixed-use areas and some of the surrounding areas in there where the THD zoning designation that you referenced and/or those types of uses may be a better fit.
Area five. I see, Planning Area Five, okay. I just want to make sure that we didn't have them completely closed out in the development. Thank you.
They're an important part.
Other questions? All right, does the applicant want to step forward and state your name and address for the record?
Mr. Chair, this is Mr. Larry Jacobson from Front Range Communities, and we'll pull up their presentation here momentarily.
Okay, we're good. Thank you, Paul, and thank you, Mr. Chair, for recognizing us. I am Lawrence Jacobson with Front Range Communities, address 4100 East Mississippi Avenue, Suite 500, Denver 80246. And first of all, I want to thank Planning Commission for allowing us to have a special meeting tonight. Thank you all for consenting to this. We greatly appreciate it. I also want to thank the staff for working with us so diligently for the past, really, 18 months. We've had many, many meetings, many, many iterations. It's been a very cooperative, partner-like experience, and I think the end result of our community is going to show that, as you'll see tonight. So, without further ado, also, I want to introduce the rest of the team. So, we have Eric McDaniel, who's our civil engineer; Karen Henry, who's our planner and landscape architect; Matt Osborne, who's my business partner, and he'll be speaking to you after me; and CJ Kirst, who's a consultant in terms of land development. So, thank you all very much. So, just to give you an overview, we are the, what we're talking about is phase one, segment one, which is the highlighted portion of the property. And you can see there are a lot of other communities around. There's Meadowlark across Crowfoot Valley, there's Trails of Crowfoot southeast of us, Anthology North to the north of us, the finished part of Stroh Ranch. And then, if you look at our drawing, everything west of us and south of Stroh Road, more or less, is, that's segment two. So, that's where there will be different types of development, mixed-use, townhome, and other types of development, other than just single-family. The first segment is just single-family and paired. PA 6 will end up being paired. So, this will give you another view, sort of zooming in to just our project, so you can see segment one and then segment two. So, this is the existing drainage pattern, which has really driven this whole application to amend the PD. So, if you look at the way all of these existing streams run right through the middle of several different planning areas, that's really not the right way to design a community. And urban drainage in the town have asked us to come forward and redesign the planning areas in a way that takes advantage of the existing drainage, rather than forcing the drainage into areas that work with the existing planning areas. So, what we did is, we had a couple of civil engineers work on this, and we really designed around this stream protocol, and we ended up with different planning areas, which you'll see in two slides. But first of all, what is dendritic drainage? So, candidly, I've been in this business for 30-plus years, and I had no idea until about a year and a half ago. Dendritic drainage, I'll just read, is a system which, rather than relying upon extreme earthmoving and the creation of large concrete detention ponds, utilizes the existing topography and a system of smaller, more natural detention ponds. So, the result is an environmentally sensitive drainage infrastructure, which is simpler and more cost-effective to maintain. So, just drilling down on this a little bit, you're using the existing streams, you're forcing the drainage where it was intended to over the millennia of erosion, and you're not building ponds such as what you have on the left in that photo, which are concrete-lined and are really forcing drainage to go in a certain direction. You end up sculpting a pond more like the one on the right, and then you plant it afterwards. So, the result is, it's more environmentally sensitive, it's more efficient to handle the drainage, and candidly, it looks a lot better than the one on the left. So, that's the idea behind the dendritic drainage. And the added benefit is that the one on the left, if there's a really big storm, sometimes that concrete will get torn up, end up floating downstream, then it has to be replaced, which is expensive. The one on the right is designed to avoid much of that repair and maintenance cost. So, here we have the existing plan, and then we have the proposed new PD plan on the right. And then, the next slide, you can kind of see the differences. So, the blue outlines are the new planning areas, and the ones underneath them that are sort of shaded out are the old planning areas. So, what we've done is allowed for drainage to flow pursuant to the original natural pattern, as opposed to trying to force it to go through the middle of various planning So, here we have PD amendment, proposed segment one. So, here are all the planning areas. So, you can see, the shape isn't all that different from what it was before, but what we've done is, we have the same number of residential units as what was in the prior PD, and we've added almost 10 acres of open space to the plan. So, now you can see it with all the drainage improvements in it. So, instead of there being a large detention pond in the middle, do you mind? No, wait. So, right, the way it was originally designed, there was supposed to be a large detention pond, right about where the cursor is, extending down towards Lemon Gulch. So, now what we have is a series of smaller detention ponds upstream from there. We have drainage coming down into these smaller ponds, being detained, being released, finding its way downstream, and then ultimately, all of this drainage finds its way to Lemon Gulch and then to Cherry Creek, and so on and so forth. So, that was, that's the background of dendritic design and how we ended up changing the planning areas to reflect the dendritic design. So, without further ado, I'll turn it over to Matt Osborne.
Thank you, Larry. My name is Matt Osborne, O-S-B-O-R-N, Front Range Communities, 4100 East Mississippi Avenue, Suite 500, Denver, Colorado 80246. Thank you very much for your time. I echo Larry's comments, and I want to walk through just a couple of the other components of the rezoning request as it relates to some of the other constraints that have driven the request that we have before you tonight. The first one relates to, and Mr. Workman did a very nice job of outlining, the request on Planning Area Nine, which is the planning area at the northeast corner of the site. And really, as we evaluated the site through this planning process and the dendritic drainage approach, and the planning area started to morph a little bit to address the existing drainages, one of the other constraints that we identified was that Planning Area Nine, which is identified in the master plan as a neighborhood center and had mixed-use zoning in the existing, or has mixed-use zoning in the existing PD, had some significant site constraints that we were trying to address. And as we evaluated it from a land use standpoint and recognizing that there could potentially, with the zoning, be commercial uses on the site, really recognized that those were not going to be feasible because of two important elements, the first being the grades on the site, and the second being access. And so, the first, the grade element, we provided a slide here that identifies the grade difference between the intersection at Stroh Road and Crowfoot-Motzenbacher, which is down kind of on the right-hand side of that, of the chart, rising up to the left-hand side. And so, the existing grade, as it sits today, from that intersection, center of that intersection, to about where the site could be developed and where we have now, have anticipated where a roadway will be aligned, is about just over 37 feet. And so, to get that down to a more reasonable level would either require significant to a more reasonable level would either require significant grading and taking that site down, which would have impacts further into the site and with the drainage, or we'd end up with a site that was not visible from the adjacent roadways and create issues from a commercial standpoint. So, that was kind of one element, was the significant grade difference between intersection and that site. And then, on the next slide, Paul, if you don't mind, the second piece was access to the adjacent roadways. So, on the north side of the property of this planning area, Stro Road, to the south and east is Crowfoot Valley Road. And again, with that grade differential and trying to accommodate the engineering requirements for roadway design, first of all, we would not have been able to have an access from -- a full movement access from Crowfoot Valley Road. And then, the second piece is, on Stro Road, the full movement intersection would be more than a quarter-mile from that intersection at Stro and Crowfoot-Motzenbacher. And so, what that really resulted in is a recognition that commercial uses did not make as much sense here as they would in other parts of the broader community. So, the request is for a change in the zoning from the mixed-use designation that currently exists to single-family e-residential, which is a maximum density of six units to the acre. I think the thing to recognize is, as Mr. Workman mentioned in his presentation, that we've acknowledged through the partial waiver process, we've identified and obligated ourselves to a third of those mixed-use areas within the center of the site at the Stro-Chambers intersection to be specifically commercial uses. And so, as you look, kind of as you draw out from the site and look a little bit more regionally, we think that's a much better location to locate commercial uses. And so, that moving, essentially shifting those kind of uses from this intersection to the Stro-Chambers intersection is going to be much more viable in the future. We think, as you kind of look, understanding this is a neighborhood center, identified in the master plan, actually, the site to -- it's not our property, so easy for me to speak to somebody else's property, but we think that the site to -- on the southeast side of that intersection at Stro and Crowfoot is a more viable commercial property than this one because of the elements that I mentioned. So, that's really the Planning Area 9 portion of the presentation. I think the other piece, just to kind of step back again from kind of a more global view of the community, is really a recognition of what this dendritic design approach resulted in for the community as it relates to parks, trails, and open space. And as Mr. Jacobson mentioned and Mr. Workman, the resulting open space that is generated in this Segment 1 has increased from about 126 acres to almost 136 acres. And I think not only -- it's not just quantity of open space that has been increased, but I think really the quality of the open space as we step back and went through this process with staff and with our consultants. I think what we've really ended up with is a plan that has much better open space. We identified some natural features that will be preserved on the site that would not have been with the existing PD. And so, I just feel much more comfortable with that we're going to have a much better open space network within the neighborhood. The other piece relates, just as kind of extending through parks, we will be, as we move further into the process, the review processes for the specific planning areas, we will be coming back to you with more specific plans on the parks for each of these neighborhoods. We will be meeting or exceeding the requirements of the town for each of those neighborhoods, but a kind of -- a bit of a preview of what's to come as we move into the specific planning for these planning areas, that the parks are an important part of each of those neighborhoods. And then, lastly, Paul, if you don't mind, moving to the next one, just the trail network that is going to be generated, or this can be developed for the site, I think, will really be something -- again, we've worked very closely with staff in identifying proper locations for these trails. The current PD has an extension of the regional trail through Lemon Gulch and towards Cherry Creek, extending from our property towards the west. And so, this plan shows that regional trail in the dashed black line. And then, we really have a pretty extensive trail hierarchy. Again, more detail to come as we move further into the planning process, but a series of local trails that will connect to the regional trail and connect to neighborhoods and neighborhood parks. And then also, soft-surface trails that will highlight some interesting elements of the open space areas, et cetera, but a pretty extensive trail network and hierarchy that will really allow for a very pedestrian-friendly neighborhood for a community of such a large size. So, we're very excited about what this has generated. And just to maybe go on to the next one, if you don't mind, Paul, but the basic tenants for the PD amendment are in front of you, but really, you know, we really respectfully request your approval of this request. It's based on the approval criteria outlined in both of the staff reports. We feel like that approval criteria has been met. Just to kind of summarize the rationale for the PD amendment, first of all, it addresses this dendritic planning approach. And frankly, we spent, as Mr. Jacobson mentioned, we spent a lot of time with staff and with consultants, going a lot further down the road in terms of our planning. So, we've really, beyond just kind of drawing bubbles on a plan for this PD amendment, we've gone very far into the process in terms of identifying roadway networks, lotting, et cetera, to make sure that we've addressed a lot of the issues up front and ensure that we can accommodate a lot of these elements of this dendritic design. Again, the PD amendment does not increase residential units. It actually increases open space. There is a revision to the minimum lot size to reflect the market conditions and promote a more attainable housing. Some of that you'll see in Segment 1. More of it you'll see in Segment 2. And then, the rezoning is also a request on, as we discussed, on Planning Area 9, primarily due to the grade differential and also to access for or from Stro and from Crowfoot Valley. So, I think the overall result is a plan with which we're far happier, frankly, and I think the town will be much happier going forward. And so, we definitely appreciate all of staff's efforts. It's -- I think they get a little tired of seeing us. We're down here probably a couple times a week on various elements, but it's really been a collaborative effort and a process. We appreciate your time and your consideration in accommodating us on this for a special meeting. And we're -- Larry and I are available for any questions that you may have in our consulting team as well. So, thank you very much.
Questions for the applicants?
I have, just for information, when the natural drainage coming down that you are proposing intersects with a new roadway, do you culvert that? Do you bridge that? I assume there were -- or does the water just run over an existing roadway? How does the water get through that new construction?
It's a combination of both. So, there are elements of -- and the dendritic approach tries to minimize the piping of the drainage. And so, in a lot of these cases where those open space areas were extended into these planning areas, it was to try to take drainage swales. Where in kind of in old days engineering, you would look for ways to pipe that drainage as soon as possible. Where we could, we tried to accommodate that in drainage swales. And so, the hope is that we were able to minimize piping. There will be some piping of some of the drainage in some areas. I guess, two major areas where we're actually building bridges over the drainage areas. One will be on Chambers as it crosses Lemon Gulch, right where you can see the cursor. And then, the second is at Spirit Trail Boulevard, where the Lemon Gulch Tributary, we call Brandy Gulch, will cross that collector. That will also be a bridge, so that has two benefits. One, it provides a better drainage approach with those crossings, and it also provides a more pedestrian-friendly approach because there will be trail connections that will go instead of through a box culvert, will be under bridges. And so, a little bit more pedestrian-friendly environment than you may typically see in those areas.
Bridges would be two-lane with pedestrian access on the sides or just two-lane?
They will be -- so, Chambers is actually, in full build-out, will be a six-lane arterial through that area. Our obligation is for half of that, the construction of half of that. Spirit Trail is a residential major collector. Is that right? Boulevard collector. I'm sorry, I knew I was going to miss that. And so, that is two lanes with a median. But in both cases, sidewalks on both sides of the bridge, and then obviously, the trail going underneath as well.
Thank you.
Other question?
Yeah. Well, the dendritic drainage that you've arranged here, how will that affect trails at Crowfoot that's already under construction? Is that all?
Yes. It shouldn't affect that development at all. I mean, this development drains basically to Lemon Gulch, which heads downstream away from that development. So, there won't be any impacts to that development that's already developing. Unfortunately, this is kind of a new concept, and it really came about after the Trails of Crowfoot started their design. So, they didn't follow a similar dendritic concept with their design.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else?
Oh, yeah, I have one more. So, you're responsible for half of the build-out of South Chambers Road, and then the second half of the build-out will be done as a capital improvement by the city when it's required. So, how much more development will we be needing before it's going to be required? Is it going to be when they get the second half of this project done, we're suddenly going to need it? Or what's -- what does it look like?
Yeah. So, we have plans to expand basically all sections of Chambers as you go between Crowfoot Valley Road all the way up to Hess. So, really, the first trigger that's going to need to be met is, we're going to want Hess -- our Chambers to be extended all the way continuously between those two roads. So, each segment of the development, so these guys, Segment 2 has the next segment of Chambers. The Anthology North property to the north of this, they have a set couple segments. So, once all those are connected, then we have a continuous corridor. Then, we start thinking about expanding it to the full width. Three lanes of roadway can handle quite a bit of traffic. Six lanes, obviously, is a major roadway along the lines of Parker Road. So, we would need to see some major volumes before that would -- we'd need to do that. We do anticipate that Chambers is going to see big volumes because it's going to be a very direct route up to Hess Road into I-25 or Ridge Gate in that area. So, we're going to monitor it and see, you know, how, I guess, how traffic volumes develop, basically, as soon as a connection is made. That really, when that happens, depends on the market, how quickly things develop. Could happen as soon as five years, could be more like 10 to 15 years. So, something we're going to have to, yeah, just kind of monitor it as we look forward.
Further questions? All right. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you have any additional questions for staff?
I have one other question for Paul. Here we've got another PD just as we're going into our LDO revisions. So, how will this PD fit into the LDO when we eventually get it revised?
It's a good question. Just for everybody's benefit, this PD won't be unique. We have several in town. So, this PD will be handled very similar to the other PDs that we have in town. While the project consultant isn't necessarily far enough along to have a specific answer to that question, the consultant has been charged with, how are we going to accommodate our existing PDs with our new land development ordinance? It's likely that items that are addressed and codified as part of this PD will continue to be a part of the entitlement, and items and issues that are not addressed as part of this PD would then default to the new LDO standards and be enforced as such.
Okay, thank you.
All right. As this is a public hearing, we will open the discussion to public comment. If you have a comment on this matter before us, step forward to the podium. Seeing none, we will close the public comment. Do we need further information? Okay, we will close the public hearing at 7:44. Planning Commissioner, discussion.
This one appears to be pretty straightforward. I agree with the change to 9 because of the topography and the elevation of that site. I'm also appreciative that they're not adding more units. It's going to decrease lot size but not increase number of units within it. And all of that being said, I'm in favor of it.
I went out and drove the property, the boundaries of the property that I could today to observe that difference in elevation. And I could certainly see that it is a much better use for it, not to try to make that commercial with traffic coming in and out for that. So, I support that. I'm also excited that, you know, moving into this idea of dendritic drainage is a new concept for me as well, and I support that. I think that's good that we're going to be able to move into that, and I hope that we'll be able to have future developments look at that as well. It's certainly more attractive, and it looks like it'll be less expensive to maintain. So, I'm in support of this application.
I am as well.
I am also. I like the idea of keeping the number of units and putting the single-family up front at Crowfoot and Stro Road and moving the commercial within the community. And the way the drainage has been redeveloped is, I think, a good idea. So, I'm in favor of it.
I agree. I'm in favor of the proposal also. I think the, like you said, the new approach to drainage is interesting and innovative, and I believe, you know, much less disruptive to the natural environment, which is really nice. And the new layout of the lots looks more conducive to kind of the way we're living nowadays and the way it was originally laid out. So, I appreciate that. So, I'm in support.
I don't really have anything to add. I appreciate the applicant's work and the work with the staff and coming up with, I think, what has the potential to be a very attractive community for the residents of Parker.
So, on the first item, which is the rezoning, do we have a motion?
I move the Planning Commission to recommend Town Council approve the requested Hess Ranch planned development rezoning.
I'll second.
It's moved by John, seconded by Rich, that Planning Commission recommend Town Council approve the requested Hess Ranch planned development zoning. Indicate your vote on the screen when it comes up. Okay. Do we have a motion on the infrastructure sketch and preliminary plans?
Yes. I move the Planning Commission recommend Town Council approve the proposed sketch and preliminary plan, subject to the condition in the staff's report.
I'll second.
Okay, it's been moved by Ruth Ann, seconded by Eliana, that Planning Commission recommend Town Council approve the proposed sketch and preliminary plan, subject to the condition in the staff's report about the utility easements as requested by the Public Service Company of Colorado Intermountain Rural Electric Association and Parker Water and Sanitation should -- and they must be shown on the final plat.
What he said.
Yeah. Again, signify your approval on the screen when it comes up.
Next item. Planning Commission items. We need to select a We need to select a vice chair and an acting vice chair. And the first part is nominations, and those are just oral nominations. Do we have nominations from the floor? From the peanut gallery here?
I nominate John Howe for vice chair.
I'll nominate Eliana Burke for acting vice chair.
Any other?
Just me.
Do we just do it by acclamation, or do we have to write it down?
I'll vote.
Hmm?
I mean, write it down.
Write it down, okay. I think I lost my piece of paper, and I would have been in trouble then.
The main chat's in this room.
No, 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 this is, no Russian interference.
Careful.
Pass them down.
Just pass them down.
Pass them that way.
Yeah, it is a lot like that.
Get in trouble doing that.
Bryce, are there any staff items?
No, sir, there are not.
Okay. And we meet again in two weeks, is that correct?
Or next week.
Next week, rather. Will there be training prior to then?
Training will start August 22nd.
Okay.
Did you leave the meeting?
I logged out.
Okay, it is unanimous, John Howe is voted in as vice chair, and Commissioner Eliana Burke as acting vice chair. Congratulations.
All right, then we will adjourn the meeting at 7:51. Thank you all.